... United States of America and to the Republic of America, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Almost gracious, we thank you for that. There you are. You alone are good, Lord. We thank you for that. Father, we pray that you be able to submit it, that we conduct it in a manner that brings you glory. We lift our city up in your name. That everything continues to open. We ask that you forgive us where we fail in our individual walks, Lord, and Christ will help you.
MC.
Yeah.
Mike.
Here.
Jeremy.
Here.
Erica.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
And JJ is absent.
Okay, the first item in the business is approval of tonight's term. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Got a motion there. Do I hear a second?
I'll give a second.
Okay, second by Mark. On a favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those like sign, and that's approved. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the August twenty-sixth and September ninth meetings?
So.
Got a motion by Jeremy. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. All in favor, say aye.
Very aye.
All of those like sign. Those are approved. Next item is the financials, and those are not available tonight yet. They're still being worked on. So I would entertain a motion to table both the city and water and sewer financials. Got a motion by Jeremy. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. All in favor, say aye.
Very aye.
All of those like sign. That's approved. Those are tabled. Parkman reporting, Spire Parkman.
Um, the biggest thing we do to the government this month is the county's water shortage. Two thousand twenty-five ounce shortage. It should be there in about two weeks. So, um, I told the mayor, I'll speak on that when I come down. I've been pleading with the county for the last several months to get some engine work. So, that will help our agents status for the model. We'll still have to replace the double. This twenty-two, three years old here with a year dividend. Um, that's the price I have to pay for that big money. Um, we're looking at the one we bought, um, from the county a few months ago for two thousand dollars or whatever it was paid for maintenance for the two acres that we purchased from the county that they gave to us. I might be looking to sell it though, because we're running out of the other place. So, I'll bring that to the county to see if they can figure something out on that. Still, we are going to use all of our experience.
Thank you.
Chief, pleasure. Thank you for breakfast.
Um, thank you for breakfast, I'll cover the floor.
Okay.
From six to seven.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the lease report.
Good evening. Um, I apologize for my attitude personally. He is still out. He should be back tomorrow morning, uh, prior to the mission tag, the citizens' regards. You'll have the statistics for last month. Any questions? That's about all we've got for now. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next is planning report.
Good evening. The plan for work for, uh, month September, um, or how did we have it when, sorry? The, uh, plan out that we have going forward for the month of October, our plenary plan for subdivision and rezoning, there was a resup. Uh, we're still working on the, you know, Master Street Plan, future lineers plan, but these are old items that's been planned previously, and it's things that have some minor things that need to be worked on. But the September City Council on, you know, discussed at the work session, there's still the other two rezonations, the PZB or CMT Engineering. This is the one that's at the intersection of four and Highway two sixty-four. The commission of the department has chosen the rezoning for that PZB to the city council. And then we have the rezoning for Janus City where the one sixteen rail road. And this would be, there's, uh, the plant commission also heard to be rezoned to the two R three. Those are the ones we'll be looking at tonight. Um, we can discuss that later on. I have stuff that we want to, we want to, we get to that point. And then just a general thanks was, we're still working with over on our zoning customer. And we've also met regarding the Master Street Plan, future lineers plan, uh, the plant commission at the meeting last Monday night. We got some minor changes to go by as far as one area south of town on the Ford area and tennis and flight areas. But we're supposed to put there and change those, just local connections that have gone through. But, um, we'll let the plant commission make that determination at their next meeting in two weeks. Unless you'll add any specific questions or anything else, we can come back to the rezonations a little bit.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the attachments to this one, that one there.
Yeah.
On the front, it says, if I'm reading correctly, on number two or September, R three? Is that correct? And then, uh, on the attachment to the R four.
Yes, so they amended their proposal at the beginning to change it from R four to R three. So that's why it's showing down there for all the items. The plant commission had voted to affirm it already, because I mean, kind of before you all, that's what your board is showing. Verified that adjustment on the next last one. Thank you. Thank you all.
Next item is water and sewer report.
Well, the open work orders are looking good. We have one potentially. Um, we're waiting on the air to come back out and detect to confirm that. If they do, fix it. And then they're going to be continuing the inspection, uh, when they come into town. So hopefully they'll find more for us. But right now, that's only what we're aware of. Uh, we still have one open position, but we've extended an offer to the gentleman's. Hopefully by next meeting, that will be filled. The water loss went down to thirty-seven percent. Likely a big portion of that was our street line replacement where we took out that second gallonized pipe. We, uh, have found a few other areas that our gallons are likely the biggest focus of the water loss. Uh, a section may be replaced when the yard comes through with the highway. And the other section, we're not going to plan to, uh, get those customers tied into our PZB line because they don't have access to two lines. And so we'll maybe that area with gallons. Any questions?
Thank you.
I just want to make a statement that the water loss down to thirty-seven percent for August, which is great, that's all right. We did discuss during our meeting that perhaps we are looking at an explosive adding some staffing for water and sewer since the ground is growing. However, the staffing has not changed for the.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Uh, so the Mattville Lift Station project, we issued substantial completion on that, I believe yesterday. Um, that's kind of the main update. That's kind of the water super related items. As far as the engineering items, the R doc tab, that's the West Wallace Road and Sands Road sidewalk project, R is approved of design. And so we just got a few items from the air to sign, and we will get that advertised soon. Uh, traffic signal, so the pole should have been manufactured and included back September nineteenth. And construction is tentatively scheduled to begin in September twenty-ninth, subject to meetings. Um, and also Daniel provided the mayor and Will some guidance on where we want to go with evaluating, uh, sorry, drainage recommendations. So we got that from there for you. Any questions?
Thank you. Turn history report.
Good evening, council. Uh, a couple items. Uh, one is the coffee shop lease that's on the agenda. Um, I did receive a signed copy of that from, um, the tenant. And, uh, so if we will approve that tonight, that they'll be ready for, uh, for signature. Uh, at the October, uh, work session, I know, I think we talked about the previous work session, uh, bringing for the, um, the franchise, the revised franchise ordinances for, um, Black Hills Gas or Swepco and Carroll Electric in Bright Speed. And, uh, we didn't do that because I was, um, still struggling to get something back from Swepco and Carroll Electric, Block Purge and Swepco with good contact. So I think we're ready for the October meeting. Uh, the, the idea would be that, uh, we bring them forward to you in the work session in October for approval in, um, uh, the October meeting later at the end of the month. And then for the new rights to go to affect, like you said, it's a good time, two months of the time for utility to get, get change out of the current pressure to have an effect. Uh, otherwise, I'm looking at a number of amendments right away, uh, that have issued over the last, um, month, along with, uh, various, various other things we have on our agenda. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Next item is clerk treacher report.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Next item is mayor's report. Um, on September sixth, we held the Northwest Arkansas House and Supply and Portability signed in this building. We had a great turnout with every length from the Senate, Congressmen reps, State, uh, and Senators and reps, matters, partners, buildings, factors, developers, builders, and finance officers. Uh, the conversation was open and very informative and laid. I do want to thank the Municipal League Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning and Groundworks for their assistance in that, in that endeavor. And the Municipal League is continuing the discussion with other regional meetings around the state. And on the weekend of October tenth and eleventh, we plan to have our call meeting where, uh, that's the date that it's looking like that's when that will happen. So that's all I've got at this time. Next item is public comments. Anyone? All right then. Follow up questions on the list that you mentioned a few minutes ago. We just recently completed it. And we're in the final, uh, workup of the, uh, financials and closing out the grant and the finance, uh, with the amnesty. So we're, we're coming to the end of that project. And drainage, I know Daniel was working on some drainage items, but we have, uh, a lot of information there except that he is moving forward with, uh, some of the design and discussion on options there. Next item on the agenda is new business resolution on the rising rate of property tax for the city of Gash Springs for twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Got a motion by MC. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mark. Is there any discussion?
For the record, it's staying the same.
It is staying exactly the same.
I can explain that.
Yes, it's staying at two point five seven minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those like sign, and that did pass to forty-eight.
Twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight.
Okay. Next item is a resolution for the lease agreement with the coffee house. Do I hear a motion to approve? Got a motion from MC. Do I hear a second? Second by Jeremy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those like sign, and it's approved. That's twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine. Next item is the resolution to set forth authorized signers for the, uh, bank accounts. Do I hear a motion to approve? Got a motion by Mike. Do I hear a second? Second by Jeremy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those like sign. That one is approved. It's signed twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one. Next item is resolution approving real estate exchange agreement between, or basically for the water tower location. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Looking for.
Got a motion by Mark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those like sign, and that one's approved. That's twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one. Next item is the, uh, resolution to amend the twenty twenty-five budget. Do I hear a motion to approve? I want to give it a good, I'd like a motion so we can discuss.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Okay, motion by MC. Do I hear a second? Second by Jeremy. And I'll open the board with, uh, discussion and I'll just point out what I'm doing here. I've been working on the, um, financials and looking at the new term budget. Everything appears to be adjustable, but I found a couple things. One is that, uh, most of this did not reflect the updated, uh, uh, resolutions and things throughout the year. This brings the current. I didn't add anything, but I did subtract one item, which is the, uh, it's a withholding that was shown on there for the, uh, oh, for an insurance from it. And so I just took that off because we don't show withholdings within budget. And then I really want to give, um, our new finance director an opportunity to start with something clean and fresh that was just approved. I did not add anything to any department. I did not deduct anything except what I just noted. So that is my reasoning in, in bringing this at this time. I would have made sure where a couple of minor adjustments and moved on because I think we're good till the end of the year from what I'm seeing. But that was, nothing here has really changed except that one item.
So, I have a question. So since we don't have the financial, how do you make these changes?
Uh, this is the budget. The financials didn't have these changes put in for the year. And so that's why we've been taking them. This is just a review of the budget itself, and I went there and spent last two weeks making sure that every resolution was added to it and every, uh, ordinance to affect that funding was added to it. And I changed nothing else.
But nothing else can change.
Nothing else except that one line I mentioned that really shouldn't be budgeted.
So if any of these are financial, that's not like, do they have any long issue?
The financials we bring to, I'll be bringing the financials to the next work session. This will give, um, Carl the chance to load the, this and to be able to bring everything up to date and to come to the work session and discuss those financials with him.
So all the resolution that we have passed and everything is.
Are required to do this. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and that did pass. That's twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two. Next item is, um, ordinance to rezon approximately seven acres with PZB. It's a quarter of, um, four nine and two sixty-four. Do I hear a motion to suspend rules and place this on their final reading by title? So, got a motion by MC. Do I hear a second? Second by Jeremy. Uh, crawl call.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Kimberly, can we have ordinance number?
Sure, it's twenty twenty-five dash eighteen.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, City Case, Princeton, County Arkansas. Ordinance to rezon approximately seven point zero four acres located at parcel number zero five dash one, zero 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 two dash zero zero two, from neighborhood Commercial C three to Plano, Southern District, PZB, City Case, Princeton.
Do I hear a motion to approve? So, got a motion from MC. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, I think they've done a wonderful job here, but there's two concerns I have since it's going right next to the townhomes and between, uh, Detroit and Brentwood. Um, I, I personally don't think it's a good idea to have a bar. It's a bar around tavern. I understand the tavern, but having a bar open late, I don't think is really conducive for that area. And same with the dance hall. You have a dance hall, I'm assuming you do wedding dances or a space to rent, something along those lines. I don't think that would be very conducive for that area as well. And then ahead of micro, little grease slash restaurants, um, I would worry about cut out time for that. Those are my concerns with, with this. Otherwise, I feel it's wonderfully good together. I just need to think of the residents in the town, the future residents of the townhome. We also have Hillcrest going up there. We have this other development going up on Rainbow beside Bridgewood. So those are my concerns, those are my three concerns with this. Couple of questions. Under on the drawing?
Yes, sir.
Here.
Future location one, yes, potential.
So, there will always bring water down?
Like, it's gonna be held into the pond, you know, during the same location that it does at the same rate, like out onto the highway, you know, uh, areas of, but that's speculation because these aren't drawings and we're not there, this is just a reason. So it's really not time to ask that question.
So, we could eventually have more water running down.
No, I mean, not. Because that's what ponds were as the old, you know, and release it at the reference.
In the two hundred year floods, if this wasn't in there, we wouldn't have had that water running down the highway?
I don't know if that's what they're doing here. As far as, you know, once they get to the actual development stage.
I, I think.
I mean, they're just showing that as a future location for water, but they haven't done engineering yet because we're still in the zone of the economy, state of the game.
We're just putting on this phone, you're right.
Yes, sir.
So the rest of this is up to planning condition?
I mean, it's up to the ordinance and the governor of the city to put in place, you know, drinker manualities are pending, you know.
I understand, up to, up to the engineers for planning condition.
Yes.
But, um, but what do we do about these concerns? Can we strike these? The council, you have an opinion on a bar, dance hall, brewery, restaurant? Not something that's very problematic, it's a good shot of time, just kind of like Costa Penas up until midnight. What, is this the time to address this? Like now, striking space?
I would say that would have been the time to address the work session, when they go to patent address before we came to this point.
I expressed my concern about the tavern, um, bar.
Say that just in the way.
Can I ask you a question? Erica, where, are you looking on?
I'm looking at their, um.
Are they available?
It doesn't have a.
Exhibit fee.
It's the.
Exhibit fee, allowance, commercial uses.
So doesn't, doesn't that reflect another conditional use?
All of that are conditional use.
All of those are conditional uses.
That's what I was, okay, that's what I was gonna ask, is that, is that what we're looking at?
Yes, so I guess I don't, so is that still something that council could, that they can use up for, that we can still have control? Or is it something that they can just strike now? Those are just my concerns.
And are you the applicant, sir?
Yes.
Okay, I might, I might ask you this question too, but, um, uh, so I guess these are the available uses that would be there. Should they want to do a conditional use, they have to come through a whole different process to the city in order to get a conditional use permit at that point, um.
Who would issue that, though?
What's that?
Who would issue the permit, though?
The conditional use goes to, uh, plant commission.
Or is it?
Uh, it goes to Bozum?
I think it's a PZB, I may be wrong, it's the same.
It goes to plant commission. If, if it's denied or there's an agreed party, they can appeal that to the city council. Uh, but most of the, most of the, uh, conditional use permits go to plant commission. And at that point, plant commission, uh, is able through the code to put certain conditions on their, like, hours of operation.
Okay.
No outside, no outside noises, uh, kind of, you know, they, it, it is designed to address uses that may have an impact on neighboring properties. It's like a small example, it's like no disciples or, or no outside music or, you know, whatever.
So it has another chance, this isn't just.
That is correct.
And I, and I did bring up the bar fountain tavern at last meeting.
And we talked about how the conditional use is in the last meeting.
Yes, but, um, I didn't have that actual definition, so, okay.
And those are all things that are currently allowed under the distance of the business of C three.
Yeah, that.
Even so.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
My, my fault is for, I guess, what she's asking, but she did bring it in last meeting.
Yes, sir.
I did, we did discuss it and we did explain that, I understand that too, that when you do PZD, this conditional use, it can be adjusted for this reason. Because there was a PZD, it wasn't just regular changing zone. So if you wanted to take something off this list, you could have done it.
Oh, yeah.
They said that a lot of people just think that we were not able to, when you do PZD, that was one of the benefits that you guys were saying, you do PZD, that if you want to change something, you can change it.
Oh, yeah.
But now, we didn't change it. She did bring it to the work session. I just, I'm comfortable with hearing that she didn't bring it to a work session because.
I think it was probably a camp with a work session through the discussion of being a conditional use report, um, management. But I have another captain, speak to that. I mean, it's their application.
I, I think it'd be good to have the applicant speak to it, I don't know what their, what their plans are consistently with regard to those particular uses.
Yes, we don't have any plans for the use. We just want to have the option sometime. And with the condition use, so they would actually come back to the city and make sure we had all conditions that the city wanted for those approvals. So, so it can be, those can be, uh, not coming back to the city and distribution, but ours can be conditioned on there, um, as we discussed. I think, uh, during the work session, I thought we were good with the fact that as long as they come back to the city, that the bar. I think during the work session, I thought we were good with the fact that if only we could connect to the city, that the bar license figure left on there. But if it's not given to the city, we need other requirements.
I was perfectly fine with tavern, I'm not okay with bar. That is my personal opinion, I don't want.
Uh, I think my understanding was that, I think she brought it up and we discussed that we had P C D. In fact, we went through this, I asked for the list of things and we discussed it. We can go back to the minutes, I guess, to tell them, see what we discussed, but, you know, it was, if you guys decided not to do it, that's one thing, I'm okay with it. But just saying that, you know, we didn't bring it, we did bring it up, we discussed it, that she did bring it up, I just want to make sure we're very fast aligned on this issue. We did bring it up, it could have been, it could have been changed here because it was a P C D. And decided not, for whatever reason, this. And I'm okay with it, as long as we are clear what it, I mean, I don't want any money bother here, I want to be straightforward here with everybody. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the little bit of statement there. It was brought up here, we did discuss, she did bring it, I remember that I asked you specifically, I had a question, but.
Yeah.
With the list, and you said, yeah, we can do it, it has what P C D is for, otherwise, really, the only reason P C D is for that. Otherwise, our city doesn't have that much ordinance right now, that's why we're using a lot of P C D. Otherwise, P C D is specifically used in a specific situation to change it and if I'm wrong, correct me please.
I mean, that's what P C D is for, yeah.
I will say, having been at the planning meetings as well, and absolutely, you did bring it up at this meeting, that's, that's no question about that. But having been at the planning meetings as well, they spend probably, what, close to an hour one night going through a whole list of things that this used to have in.
I listen.
They kept a few of them, they got rid of others, they, there was a very good discussion back and forth. Uh, I will say for the applicant, that he has been very cooperative and worked with us on a lot of that. But if that's a concern that we need to address tonight, is that something we can amend tonight?
Well, it might be good to kind of continue on the discussion to see what the applicant thinks about that. This is his application and, uh, it's his application. And, uh, I, you know, I, I think if he's willing to, they're willing to, uh, make a change, that's one thing. But if he's not, you know, he may want an other name, vote on that, I'd have to see where the, where the council is, or he may want to say, hey, give him some time. Uh, a week or two to try to see if I can work through some of this. So it might be good for the applicant to discuss.
So what's the specific word that's on this, just the word bar?
Bar lounge, because I think, I think that's what it was known as. I'm okay with the tavern, is the tavern have food, correct? I would assume, yeah, you have to be sure you have it low. Usually, well, invite the neighbor, maybe.
Who stores it here?
Like I said, I'm only one.
I guess our question or concern, I guess, you know, it's a restaurant that has a bar or a lounge and it's for food and drinks and everything. Is that the issue, because I thought it was the same.
You said you were a big tavern, so.
I'm okay, I'm okay, but just a, a bar, you know, lounge, to me, a bar, primarily alcohol, you're going to get bar food, you're staying up until midnight or whatever the cutoff is here. And same kind of with the lounge, you probably have, it's more relaxed, you're primarily serving alcohol, maybe some of the herbs. I'm okay with tavern, I'm okay with the restaurant, I just don't want the primary, um, I guess, thing sold or the attraction to be alcoholized. For a neighborhood that has townhomes, that's going next to a residential neighborhood, Brentwood, that's across the street from Ridgewood. Um, and then we have Hillcrest coming up, I just don't think it's a very, plus the townhomes that are right next to a bar. That, that's the only aspect, if that's a restaurant bar, I mean, it's not gonna be open till, you know, midnight or whatever the cutoff is.
The restaurant would be a permitted use, so if there was a.
Yeah, restaurants have to sit at the bar, I mean, that's very common.
I think we want to look at the, David, I don't have the definitions of all the uses in front of me, but I, I assume the bar definition says that that's what it's primarily served alcohol, not served food.
Yeah.
And I, I would assume the lounge is kind of the same aspect, a layback, you probably have a more.
I would, yeah, I would say.
So that's, that's why I say that. Tavern?
Sorry, I'm back to my application, what I live for, I'm, would, so would that be a conditional use? That's still, that's a pretty big role of this condition, I'm still having to come through here to get all parts of that, essentially.
Most of your planning committee.
Did it sound like, is it, is it the bar part or is it more of an outdoor part, I guess, is my question?
I mean, to me, the noise level, like it is like super loud music, like that compatible with, you know, a hundred D protection, you know?
Was it all in the initial use process? You know, as far as.
I think there was, that was a gray area, right? It's a gray area to speak of.
I just don't know what I.
No, I mean, I think I would like it, most probably, but I look at it just slightly differently, like, I mean, because the work, it's hard to. It's, it, there's a lot of gray area, you know, there's cementing here, there's empty area, gray. But I think that if we had, to me at least, I won't say me, but if I had confidence that the noise level wouldn't be excessive, and it wouldn't be like going for its way out. Um, you know, we could restrict the hours, and maybe that comes later, you said. Um, you know, like, we would get something that's impossible, like being next to people trying to get their night's sleep, getting into the morning work, they have kids, or.
They have kids.
You know, yeah.
After this, or if, if we use the process, it's very, all the conditions are being committed for each, that has to be, that way, that's a very, a traditional use.
I understand, but things have come through here and then all has been approved and then things don't turn out the way they said they were going to. So, I'm just looking, I'm, as I said, on one hope, I would like bar and lounge full, you brought it up last time. I feel like the dance hall fine, restrict hours on that. Microbrewery is a restaurant, that whole restaurant industry, hours can be restricted on that, but I am one of those, so.
I like restaurants, restaurants serve lots of things, but it's a gray area.
But I'm okay with that, because it's, it's a restaurant, it's like pasta peanut. And we have a council member who's real too far from that.
It's just like, how do we deal with your, your rules, I guess?
Hey, Mark, we agree this library area, we thought that the condition was, if there's something we can do on there, it sounds like it's more of a problem. If this go to planning, to council, they all say so, not, and the problem maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe the conditional use, the city council has to be a part of it, and those are.
Is that possible, Justin?
No, not the way that the code currently is. I'm sorry, I, I, I know you tried to be great in there, I can't think of that, but not as a helpful way, but helps me back.
Yes, sir.
I have to go over church, which is right across the street. They're planning to play around out there in the front, which is what officially I don't know. And I sure would hate to see a bar on Wednesday nights, we have kids and we're in church. And with the playground would be out there. I really would hate to see a bar or lounge in there. Be with a tavern, I understand. But it seems like it's very important to you guys to take a stand on this one issue, you gotta come forward down. So, uh, I think we'll just let it go.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any, they said some over at our, we got an additional for, I said, bar and, and.
What? What, what I'd add to that, maybe to your point, is whether you just let down here that in the future, thought, we love this town. The, the way that there is that would be sort of in your, uh, P C D plan, so you can then just plan and bring it back to work. And have, have that, there's that option.
And then everybody for it to the council.
Can, can they recommend to amend it now and have that tomorrow, I'm struck?
Could they amend it right now? Yes, it could, yes.
Can we amend it for a while? I got that one, I'm struck.
What, what I would recommend, Erica, you want to make a motion over there? Uh, again, we can see whether that passes.
Yeah, do I hear a motion to amend?
I'm, I'm moved to amend striking the word bar on the C D.
Okay, we have a motion to strike, demand to strike the word bar and how much remove P C D, do I hear a second? Second by M C, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, are those, I have to go, since it's an ordinance.
So those are motions from the.
To amend, yes, okay, so we're good.
So you know, yeah, you can ask her, maybe she's opposed, I'm sorry to hear that, everybody opposed.
There was, was there any motion?
No.
So it's been passed.
So, uh, so the ordinance was amended and it was corrected by the, by the applicant, now you can take a, I already, you already did like the rule, right?
Uh, yeah, we like the rule and now we're, uh, we made a motion in second to approve and we were having a discussion. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Present.
M C?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, that did pass. So that will be twenty twenty-five dash eighteen. Do I hear, uh, our next item is ordinance to rezoom thirty-nine point nine seven acres located at one sixteen South Rainbow Road. Do I hear a motion to suspend rules and place this on third reading? A motion by Jeremy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mark, any, uh, or let's go ahead and roll call.
Jeremy?
Uh, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
It's ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash nineteen, City Case Springs, Kent County, Arkansas. Ordinance to rezoom approximately thirty-nine point ninety-seven acres located at one sixteen South Rainbow Road. For general agricultural, they want to do single family residential R three, City Case Springs, Arkansas.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve?
Remove.
A motion by Jeremy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by M C, any discussion? Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
That was passed. Next item on the agenda is ordinance adopting standard specifications for water and sewer. Do I hear motion to suspend rules and places on third and final reading? A motion by M C, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica, roll call.
M C?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica? Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ordinance number, oops. Down there, uh, that they should be two thousand twenty-five. Uh, City Case Springs, Kent County, Arkansas. Ordinance adopting standard specifications for water, sewer facilities, repealing provisions in conflict therewith, declaring emergency.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion by M C, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy, any discussion? Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica? Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved and do I hear a motion to approve the emergency clause?
So was.
And motion by Erica, do I hear a second? Second by Mike, roll call.
Uh, Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Erica?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved and we have no further, uh, discussion. Uh, there can be motion to, do I hear? Got a motion by Mike, go have your second, second. Second by Jeremy, I like you all to hear.